President. Councilmember Captain Robb.
President.
Councilmember Congresswoman Dunn. Councilmember Helen Willis. Councilmember Maya McGee. Councilmember Rosie Jackson. Councilmember Lee. This is Mary Yuck.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your call.
Yeah. Is he here?
They'll be here in like five minutes.
Yeah, I need to add it too. I need to add a Transit Acts presentation to our work session.
Say it.
Top of the second. Any discussion? I'll go with the favor.
We're adding the Transit Acts presentation.
Yeah, and it'll be last.
Letter G. First item. Marty Route 889, Oakley Industrial Boulevard presentation, Jody Gray.
Thank you so much. Do you just have it in your pockets or you'd be seeing it on the screen too? It's in the pocket? They're in their handouts? Okay, perfect. So, thank you so much for having me today. I wanted to talk to you today about Marty Route 889 and give you a little bit of background on why I'm here advocating for that route and a little bit more information about it. So, oh, thank you. I have control. They're in their handouts?
Yeah.
Maybe. Okay, maybe, maybe not. Okay, so I guess I should have started by introducing myself. My name is Jody Gray. I think I've met all of you before. I'm the administrator for the South Fulton Community Improvement District. That's the improvement district that's on the far side of the city that also crosses into the cities of Fairburn, Union City, and the city of Palmetto. And I'm Mark Sanders here with me today. He's our Government Relations Counsel, and so he might help me answer some questions. Oh, there it is, great. Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, so a little bit of background is the South Fulton CID initiated a multimodal study which we completed last year. That multimodal study was actually, if you've heard of the ARC freight cluster plans, it was the first freight cluster plan that was done. We called it a multimodal study because we wanted it to be more than just about freight. We really wanted to look at all modes of transportation, biking, walking, transit, our automobiles, and our trucks. So that multimodal study was a great success for us. It really helps, it's going, it's helped us guide us already and it's going to help guide us for the next few years. One of the first projects that came out of that in the first tier were some Marty bus routes to extend to our area. And that's where I'm going to talk today a little bit about Marty Route 889. So the history of Marty Route 889. This is a route we've long desired on Oakley Industrial Boulevard. However, for a very long time, that roadway was so substandard that Marty said they would never run a bus down that road unless we did improvements. And keep in mind, this is Oakley Industrial Boulevard, major truck traffic, school buses, automobile traffic, but yet so substandard that Marty wouldn't run a bus down it. So we spent a lot of time and energy seeking funding and getting that project completed. And today, that boulevard has been, had a major upgrade. It's wider travel lanes, sidewalks, shoulders, left turning lanes. It's a nice roadway. It's much safer. We have few, far less accidents. So it was time to start advocating for that bus route again. So we were so pleased that Marty heard us and they proposed implementation of this bus route in December 2017. Really, I couldn't have been more excited. This is something we have fought for for years and years, ever since the CID started. But unfortunately, during that time, the way that bus was routed, elected officials came out in opposition of that route. And it was largely to, due to concerns that they heard from the residents at Oakley Township. So without the clear support from those local leaders, the bus service wasn't there. I was sad because I didn't realize what was happening behind the scenes. And if I had, I would have gladly stepped in and tried to come up with a solution then and there, because I so strongly believed in the Marty bus route. So what we wanted to do is address those concerns head-on and make sure that route wasn't going to negatively impact. In fact, it would positively impact those residents, not by going through their neighborhoods, but by being routed on, strictly on Oakley Industrial Boulevard. So, a little bit more about the route. So why this route? So there's high travel demand and it's only increasing. If you've driven down that roadway, you know what I'm talking about, congestion, and there's not great access to jobs. Increasing jobs, increasing workforce, which is fantastic, but not a lot of options other than driving your car to get there. There's also a relatively high population of the transportation disadvantaged. That means the elderly, the disabled, and households living below the poverty line that could benefit from this route. There's densities to support the route, and we're about to break ground on a $1.5 million park and ride lot on State Route 74 that this route would connect to. We're literally going to the kickoff meeting on Friday. I'm so excited about this. This is something that CID has done all the planning for. The city of Fairburn has donated the land. We put $1.1 million into it. The city of Fairburn put $400,000. And we're moving forward with this great park and ride lot that will offer an ability for Marty buses to turn around, provide additional capacity for them to service the population. So a little bit more about the population density. So this route, again, strictly running on Oakley Industrial Boulevard, would turn around at the park and ride lot on State Route 74 in the city of Fairburn. It has above-average population density to support the route. Because I don't want to come to you all and say, "I think it's a good idea." We did our homework. We did an analysis. We wanted to make sure that all the, you know, we were able to check all the boxes, even though we knew Marty had already supported this route. Our housing density, above average. It will support a transit route. Our employment density, okay, this slide is wrong. I am trying to fix it for you all, but there's another box blocking the employment density. So you'll just have to trust me when I say, "It's above average." It's well above average. And so what are the daily trips based on ARC's travel demand model? Again, above average. It's estimated daily trips that will support transit. So what is the routing? It would propose, we would propose to modify the existing Route 889 to travel exclusively down Oakley Industrial Boulevard. We are personally not recommending that it goes into any of the neighborhoods, completing that turnaround using the park and ride lot that I talked to you about. So how can you help? Why am I here today? We'd really love it if you could write a letter of support to Marty for this bus route. It is in a portion of your city. It would travel through a portion of your city. It would service some of your residents and a lot of your employers. And so this letter of support would be invaluable. We already have letters of support and we've already submitted them from Union City and city of Fairburn. So this Marty route would travel through those three jurisdictions, yours, Union City, and city of Fairburn. So those two letters of support have already been submitted. I'd like to discuss the project with you all, our political leaders, and I'd like to go down and advocate for this route to the general manager. He needs to hear a unified voice from our communities. He can't hear just from Fairburn and Union City that this is supported, or just from me, or just from our employers. We really need to be that unified voice to get this amenity in our area. We would be happy to host any public meetings if you thought that was a good thing to do. And we want to advocate for workforce development. And we think a huge component of workforce development is getting residents to jobs. So I also wanted to put the bug in your ear. I'd love to have another work session with you all, just to talk about projects that we can work on together. Not to ask you for anything, I'm not even, I'm not even here asking you for any funding today. I just want to talk more about how the South Fulton CID and the city of South Fulton can work together positively. Have I captured your projects in your city? Do you know what we're planning in the future? Do you support it? If we wanted to put in an application for funding in the future, are we all on the same page? So I would love to come back for future work sessions whenever you all have time and talk to you more about projects that we'd like to advocate for in your city. So that's all I have for you today. Any questions? Yes, please.
I don't think that the queue is...
The queue is that it's not allowing us to request a speaking. So we, I just hosted a Marty meeting in, for District 3. Marty wants to expand past their rolling grain services down to one portion of District 3 area and Cedar Road area. And several of the residents did come out. It was a rainy, rainy, cold day. And to my surprise, several of them are open to it. Marty did do an extensive presentation and explained that in order for us to qualify for the transit system such as BRT, we have to increase ridership. And so I would, I would recommend that the council person work in collaboration with CID and Marty to do a town hall meeting
Okay.
for residents to hear the Marty presentation of what you want to do. Because they want to expand services in my district, and that's the route that I'm taking. They met with Cliff and Dale. I have turned them over to the Cedar Road president. And then also they came to South Fulton Parkway Alliance. So they're covering every aspect of that area that's going to be impacted. And I would recommend that you all do the same thing. Have a meeting in Fairburn, have a meeting in South Fulton in that area, probably at the hotel in that area. And then also have a meeting in Union City. And then, because it's really about what residents want, and educating the residents why transit is important. Because a lot of that area has been not open to Marty. But when they see that it impacts economic development, and we're not going to get sophisticated transit systems and we don't increase ridership, I think they will have a better understanding of why we need to be open.
Okay, great.
What I have now is Mr. Baker. I see Ms. Dunn is now on the queue. I guess it's working out. All right, so let's go with Mr. Baker and then he'll come back.
Let me, thank you for your presentation. I'm Mark Baker. I don't know if we met, but I represent that area. And I don't know where you were during the last time Route 889 came up, but it was met with heavy opposition. And I don't see anything different in this route that's going to please the residents in that community. There's several things. We were actually told that this was going to be scrapped. And you, you're a nice lady, but like to come back is almost like a slap in the face. We had so many people downtown who don't come out for anything in opposition of this route. And we spoke with Mr. Ben Limbry, and he assured me that that was going to be the case. So if there is a town hall, it's my duty to let the residents know that outside of me, you guys are bringing this back up, and this is your initiative, and I have voiced their opposition. Also, you mentioned that the roads have been widened. They have. They did that about two or three years ago. But we have been in conversation with GDA about a turn lane there, a double, a double turn lane there. This is impacting workers right now, coming from a 1,400-home subdivision, trying to make that left turn. Over the past three weeks, I've received several phone calls from residents because Union City is posted up on the other side of that street, writing citations when people get over, not just make the illegal left turn, but get over at the last minute. It's chaotic now already, even though they widened that road. I know the mayor has been adamant about trying to get roadway, rail, rail in our, in our city. I think you guys still should go back and consider that, even though it's not a quick fix. I understand why a councilwoman would have said that, but we can't just accept the quick fixes in the city of South Fulton. Also, there's been studies, you said, about the business. And I understand that the new businesses to that area are anxious to have their employers get to work over there, but the population density over there, like it's been the same for over 15 years, and there aren't many walkers. I know that our community has come together several times for the people who, there's probably two, actually one now because the other one passed away, but there's one person who I personally take sometimes back and forth to stores because they're not within the distance where Marty Mobility will come and help out. So that's the issue. So I understand why the proximity is something, but the residents are still against it. In reference to employment density, you did say we have to trust you on that because the map was wrong. But from our community, I'm, it's pretty safe for me to say that if they even knew that you were here today presenting and advocating for Route 889 to go down Oakley Industrial, this room will be packed.
I would love to have...
In opposition.
I would love to have an opportunity to meet with them again. And I, I was sad that I didn't, wasn't at that meeting that you were at to hear all that, because, you know, I, I hear a lot of positive. I don't get to hear the other side of it. So I would really love to, to kind of have an opportunity to dialogue with them. And I'd love to meet with you one-on-one as well, just to understand more about what you're hearing. I hear from the business community. I'm sure you hear from the residential community. If we could come together, that would be fantastic.
Have a problem meeting. But I still have to just let you leave this meeting going.
I appreciate it, yeah.
The opposition of my community.
The one change is, I, my understanding is, it was routing through the neighborhoods, and they really were in opposition. That's my understanding.
Right.
Now it would not route through the neighborhoods. That's the change.
Well, just so you know, they didn't even realize that it was routing through the neighborhood initially, and they had the opposition.
Okay.
So when they learned that it was routing through the neighborhood, the opposition became more amplified.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, it's done.
Well, thank you, and thank you Councilman Baker for that history on that. My question was in regards to the timeline. What does that look like for you to kind of go through this process?
Well, ideally, this would be on their April slate of projects. That's why Marty actually called me and asked that I meet with you all, because they are getting conflicting information from the cities. So they said, you know, is there any way we can align the three cities so we're all on the same page? So that's why I wanted to get in front of you immediately, so we could talk about this and see if there was a possibility. And if we needed to do a town hall, do one very quickly.
Ms. Guryard.
Hi, how are you? I do attend the South Fulton CID meetings monthly, because the portion of our city is in my district for the most part. And so it's a good opportunity for me to keep on top of what's going on. And I've shared with, with the group that the citizens in District 4, not only do they not want public transportation, they don't want density either. And this is something that has been, that they've talked about for many years. I've been here for 15 years, and, and that's been pretty consistent. And perhaps there might be sort of like a change or something, but when you talk about South Fulton Parkway, it becomes kind of sticky.
I am definitely not here to talk about South Fulton Parkway. Not in my area.
No, but I'm just talking about transportation in general. And the point I'm trying to make about it is that when many people moved, and those people that live there now, there were not as many cars. Okay, so that's an issue to deal with. Now there's trucks. Now on top of that, you're talking about buses. And so it becomes really complicated, and there are a lot of accidents frequently, because there's no infrastructure and pretty dense. And so trying to sell that and make a change is going to be a little bit difficult, as I've shared, because I've already shared that.
And that's why I'd love the opportunity at a work session or, I don't know, some, some way that we can dialogue more to talk about the projects that, because we do have Marty Bus Service along US 29 already, which goes through your district, and we have pedestrians crossing the road and unsafe. So can we help with at least that portion of it? Can we, you know, I mean, that's something that's already occurring today. We want to help improve, we want to, we want to make sure there aren't any accidents.
And you know what, just, just as an aside, I was looking at Google Maps one day, and I came down Oakley Industrial, going towards the businesses, and I saw a lot of people walking to their jobs, getting off the buses. I'm thinking way up at a different location and having to make that long walk down. And so I really, really saw that. And, you know, buses on 29 is quite different and buses somewhere else.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to share.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Guryard.
And so, Jordan, let me, let me explain something to you. We had, in my district, our route is A-2. And we had the issue where they were trying to expand services and come through our residential community as well. We stopped it. What Councilmember Newyard just explained to you is pretty accurate, what the meeting I had as recent as last week pulled people from District 3 and 4. And when I tell you that that part of the community was totally against Marty, adamantly against Marty. And I brought Marty into the community, which is what you're going to need to do. You're going to need to call Marty, ask Tony, who lives in our city, to bring out a team of Marty individuals into the district and educate people on Marty ridership. It was even explained why we would not be able to get rail anytime soon. Every so many miles, it's, it's going to cost almost $30 million for a mile of rail. And in order to even be considered for BRT rail, you have to have a certain amount of ridership. Our overall ridership is 2,000 people just for, you know, Route 82. And so also, in order for us to qualify for federal funding, we have to meet certain criteria. So to say, you know, we want this, yes, I want it too, but it's certain criteria, federal criteria that has to be met for us to get federal funding. It's a criteria for us to be considered for the, I consider sophisticated transit systems. And so for, I would say, reach out to Marty, have a community meeting, even if it has to be a joint community meeting with Fairburn, Union City, or South Fulton. Or if you want to do three separate community meetings, you need to, and make sure Marty is leading those community meetings, because education is key. I was supporting my residents as well, saying, "No, they don't want it, no." But once I got educated, I understand how it's important for me to open-minded about it. And so Marty has calendars three times a year. We're not even going on the April schedule. They're pushing our schedule out to December to make sure that they do their diligence with educating residents. So again, they came to Cliff and Dale, which pulled residents from Districts 3 and 4. They're going to Cedar Road next, and they've already been to South Fulton Alliance. And what I'm hearing from people is that they are open-minded about it now.
That's wonderful. I hope that's changed in Oakley Township, too.
That's why I was here.
So I would like for you to specifically have a Marty meeting with District 4. That would be very helpful.
I think District 7 is going to be the priority for this route. But then I think we can also do something for District 4. I'd love to do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say another thing in regards to the meeting. I had a meeting with Tony and the executives from Marty at Oakley Elementary. If you guys are going to try to move forward, please try to have that meeting somewhere close by so residents can attend and doing a time that works for people.
Yeah, I would probably look to you to help me figure out what the best timing would be for that innovation, so.
But just so you know, there was a meeting regarding this, where Tony should be able to tell you all of the creep that she was there with.
I definitely talked to him about it, so yes. Thank you.
Okay, Jody, thank you. Let me make one comment. And Mr. Dunn, I mean, we like. I think this whole question of, of transportation and Marty is a little bit broader than even what you're saying, Joe. And as I continue to go to the Marty Master Plan meetings, along with all other mayors, you can clearly see that the North Side of the county is deep ahead of us, and the fact that they just have $100 million to spend on transportation. And we, South Fulton Mayor, voted our disapproval of the fact that we stood by you, even at the news conference where the committee brought for us. Yet we stood in a, we stood in a meeting a couple days ago for two and a half hours to talk about nothing but the $100 million that's in local. So we have to, we have to engage ourselves, I don't know how we're going to do it, Mr. Dunn, but we're going to have to engage ourselves, we have to, we have to put down the issue of district right now. And we're going to have to gauge ourselves, we're going to have to gauge ourselves in a plan that is good for the city. If we don't, we're going to be left behind. All right? And that was my message at the meeting to all of them. I was joined in that message by Commissioner Erickson. I was even joined in that message with Commissioner Houseman. And so now it's the issue of, yeah. So it becomes, and they all agree, that what we do now becomes an issue of fairness and equity. So I would challenge us as a, as a governing body, that we have to have the broader conversation as to what we want to see for our people when it comes to public transportation. Thank you, though, Jody.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for the time.
So, Mayor, there is...
Yes, go right ahead.
There is one item that you want to look at in relation to Ms. Gray's presentation. So her official request was for the mayor to be authorized to write a letter of support. It appears that that is not the direction of the council. It's actually unclear. So I think you guys need to just specifically pay attention to that, because it is on the consent agenda. So if the council is not in agreement, then you could remove it from the consent agenda when the meeting time comes and postpone it, based on whatever you would like. We just want to make sure you, you know that.
And with the Baker, I think you can make that motion at that time. Yeah, because I don't see any resistance in Jody, Jody. There's still a lot of work, I see, that needs to be done with Mr. Baker's decision.
I understand.
All right, spread.
The next item, legislative update, Andrew Wong, AR Wong Company.
Mr. Dunn, I don't want to get these too. Thank you. Does, is it for, did I get one?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Long. You're welcome. Good seeing you. Thank you very much, too.
Council, all you council members, Mr. City Manager, City Attorney. I'm honored to be here today. I really am. My name is Andrew Long. I own and operate and run AR Long Company. Here with me today also is Ms. Lolita Browning Jackson. She has been assisting with AR Long Company since January one. We are grateful and honored to represent you at the State Capitol to both the executive branch, the Governor's Office, and obviously to the General Assembly, including the House and Senate and several of the elected officials. There are three parts to the folder that you just received. One, that I'm gonna go over briefly, are the bills and legislation that we are following for you that have anything attached to the city of South Fulton. Two is a similar document, but it's simply a tracker, where you can keep track of what bills we are following. And if you see something on here where you have a question about a certain piece of legislation, let me know. On the final two pages is the current adjournment resolution. These are the days, legislative days that are left in the legislative session. The General Assembly will end on April second. April second is the last day of the session. So first, let me speak on the bills that are, that you have asked the City of South Fulton Legislative Delegation to introduce on your behalf. The first one is HB, House Bill 121, to incorporate Fulton Industrial Boulevard. That's sponsored by Representative Roger Bruce. Currently, it is in the Senate Committee. He has already passed this bill through the House unanimously. It was one fifty-seven to zero. And the bill is now in the Senate and has been assigned to a Senate Committee in state and local government, but it has not yet been heard. So that's where we come into play to encourage that chairman to, to go ahead and book his next committee and make sure that HB 121 is on his agenda so that it can be heard. At which time, Roger Bruce will come over and present the bill to the Senate. Number two is HB 329, the TAD legislation. That is Representative Marie Metz. She was very eager and willing to do this legislation for the City of South Fulton. She submitted the language to the, to the Legislative Council. They gave her language back that she had to post in the local paper, and we published that language. And it has been in there for seven days. She's dropped the bill, and right now it is waiting to be third read. And once it's third read, it'll be placed on the local consent calendar to be voted on by the entire House. And we feel confident that it will pass the House and head to the Senate for, for Senate approval. Third bill is municipal energy, municipal emergency medical service transportation. That is sponsored by Roger Bruce. Let me remind you, Council, real quick, that on the last legislative session in 2018, there were over two thousand bills introduced during the General Assembly, and only eleven of them that were sponsored by Democrats actually passed. So this piece of legislation is not a local bill. It won't go through the local committees in the House and Senate. It is an actual bill that will be going to one of the committees for consideration. We are, at this point, we're prepared. We think that he does have a bipartisan piece of legislation, and we're hopeful that it does get a hearing in the House and we can pass it over to the Senate, and that's where our work begins and we're, we're hopeful that it can get to the Senate and be heard over there as well. But I wanted to give you that piece of, that piece of background. Next is the HB 423, Homestead Tax Exemption Bill, sponsored by Representative Deborah Bazemore. This bill is also waiting to be third read. Again, once it is third read, all of the local bills will go on a local consent calendar together, and the House will vote on them all, up or down. There's normally not a lot of discussion on, on local legislation. So that looks good. The Hotel Motel Tax for the City of South Fulton. That bill doesn't have a bill number because it has not yet been introduced. We are finalizing language on the Hotel Motel Tax, going back between the office of the City Manager here in the City of South Fulton and Legislative Council to make sure that the language that is in that bill is language that is agreeable to both sides. We are at the point that, in fact, when I walked out, that was Representative Derrick Jackson who called me, and the last piece that he needed was a date in Section Two that we had filled, filled in with the date. I gave him the date, which is the date that you all approved it on the city level in order to, in order for us to ask it on the state level, and that was February twelfth, nineteen, twenty nineteen. So he has the date. He is walking it over to Legislative Council now so that they can enter it into the code or make it an actual bill. He's then going to get language for us to publish in the paper here that has to be published for seven days, and then it'll be on a local consent calendar after it is third read as well. And it will be obviously assigned a bill number and everything. So Representative Jackson is working very diligently on the Hotel Motel Tax legislation. Now, those are the bills that members of the South, City of South Fulton delegation have been working on specifically for you. The bills after that, starting with HB 302, these are bills that may impact, or that do impact, actually, the City of South Fulton, and I know that you have a keen interest on. So I added these bills to our summary, and I'm just gonna go over them briefly. Please feel free to make notes and ask me any questions that you have after my brief presentation. House Bill 302, State Building Design Regulations. This prohibits local governments from adopting or enforcing ordinances or regulations relating to or regulating building design elements as applied to one or two family dwellings. The Georgia Municipal Association has urged all of its city member cities to oppose this legislation. I am aware that you are opposed to this legislation, and we will oppose this legislation. But in doing that, Vance Smith is the author of this legislation, and I'm not in person. Vance Smith used to be the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation. I saw Vance Smith on the third floor of the Capitol, and I asked him. I said, Representative, what is this bill for? Why, why are you even doing this bill? What, what problem are you, are you solving? And he said, well, Andrew, if I wanted to build a house, and I wanted to do what I wanted to do with that house, or paint it whatever color I wanted to paint it, or my wife wanted to paint it red, who is any governing municipal authorities to come and tell me that I can't paint that, my, my house that I built, red? And he said, we have exempted homes that are a part of any HOA. We have exempted homes that are a part of historical organizations throughout the, throughout the state. So I don't see any problem in it. This is him talking. And he said, if the mayor or members of the City Council want to give me a call from the City of South Fulton, I'll be glad to talk it over with them. And the reason why I think that's important, we're gonna oppose the bill. We're gonna oppose the legislation. But there could be something, there could be language that we might have an interest in carving ourselves out, that we could go to him and say, listen, let's, let's communicate on this, instead of just saying, we don't want to have anything to do with this, we're not gonna communicate with you at all, we just oppose the bill. So we're going to oppose it, let me be clear, but that line of communication with Representative Vance Smith is open. So I wanted to, to make sure that that was clear. The Senate version of that bill is Senate Bill 172. It essentially does the exact same thing. And this train, they want two different trains, just in case the bill that leaves the House and goes over to the Senate has problems, or the bill that leaves the Senate and goes over to the House has problems, they can at least get it done with one of the bills to cross over. So they have two trains. We're gonna oppose both of them. HB 340, amends the bail schedule. This is Representative Mike Grably. I know you all don't know him. His, his motto is God, Guns, and Grably. He's an interesting individual, very far-right, deeply rooted Republican, and he is, he is set on changing the law back to what bails used to be. He is not really open to communicating on this effort. I told him that we oppose this legislation, and, you know, he and I will remain friends, but this is, this is literally a non-starter, and we are, we're going to be on the opposite side of this issue. If you don't know what it does, real briefly, it amends general provisions regarding bonds and recognizance so as to revise provisions regarding when and under what circumstances persons accused of crimes may release, may be released on their own recognizance. So that's gonna be a challenge. I don't have memorized the, the number of signers who are on that bill, but knowing Mike Grably, he is in leadership in the House, is probably some heavy hitters. So that's gonna be a challenge to try to stop this legislation from final passage. HB 234 is Anti-Human Trafficking Protective Response Act by Representative Chuck F. Strations. And this bill is, is very complicated. It authorizes defects to provide care and supervision to children who are victims of human trafficking and expands provisions against trafficking persons for labor or sexual servitude. I know that some of you are, are very big on this topic and on this issue, so I added it to our bills of reporting. I'm following this legislation and can tell you in the legislative process what's going on with it at all times and can report back. Right now, it's waiting to be heard in committee. It did not leave the House. It is not over in the Senate, and it doesn't have many days left until Crossover Day, which is Legislative Day Twenty-Eight. Today was Legislative Day Twenty-Two. So it's not very long for, for him to get this legislation passed. And finally, HB 316, to provide for uniform equipment and ballot marking devices. Brett Barry Fleming. This bill impacts several common chapters and sections relating to elections and provides a new voting system for the state. This, this single piece of legislation almost affects fifty different codes of the Georgia Code. And it is, I think it's gonna be difficult to get this, this bill passed, but there are a lot of people screaming in opposition of this bill, as are we, and I wanted to keep it on your radar to let you know what's going on with the Voting Rights Act bill that's in this Georgia General Assembly and this for uniform equipment and devices that they're trying to, I don't wanna say sneak through, but they're trying to get passed. So those are the bills that we are following. The only two additions that I have are personal requests and interests of members of the council. One is statewide transportation. I have been asked to look into transportation projects on behalf of the City of South Fulton. And in response, the best way that I could respond to that is, first of all, Ms. Lolita Browning Jackson knows Ms. Dana Lemon very well, but the, the best way for us to do that collectively is to have a good working relationship with Ms. Dana Lemon. The State Transportation Board in the Georgia Department of Transportation is split up into fourteen congressional districts. For our district, it is number fourteen, and her name is Dana Lemon. She is probably a personal friend of each of you all's, and it's incumbent upon us to let her know how important our transportation projects are to the City of South Fulton and encourage her. Obviously, I can use my influence as well, but encourage her to make sure that our, our requests go asked for on the, the Transportation Board and get acknowledged and approved. So transportation was one, and the other one was gang, gang violence. The, the Governor is, has mentioned in his remarks, he said it on his campaign trail, he said it in his acceptance inaugural speech, and he also said it at the State of the State that one of the things he is focused on in his administration is to put legislation in place that would help tackle gangs and gang violence throughout the state. So there are areas in the City of South Fulton that are impacted by gang violence, and I am aware that we, as your, as your consultants in government relations, it is upon us to make sure that the Governor is aware that there are areas in the City of South Fulton that are impacted by gangs, and we want him to address that issue, not just around the state, but also in the City of South Fulton. So that concludes my report at this time. Let me finish by saying this. January, with the new Governor and Lieutenant Governor, January was hurry up and wait. There was not a lot of activity in January at all. This legislative session started January fourteenth. By Constitution, it's the second Monday in January every year, and this was the latest possible date that we could start, January fourteenth, on that Monday. And then because of the Super Bowl, they took off, the General Assembly decided to take off time as well, there were only five legislative days in January. February started to pick up a little bit, and after Valentine's Day is when they really started to move pieces of legislation. That's why a lot of you are getting updates from different areas, because things just started getting in motion, but they're on fire now. So for the next month, for the month of March, which will be the last month, session is over on April second, I will present to you a bi-monthly report. So the middle of March, you'll hear where all of the, where all of these bills are, where we are in the process. And then by the end of March, just before the last day of the session, you'll also get another update from AR Long Company as well. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'll address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Long, for your presentation. There are two other bills that impact South Fulton I would like for you to add to your radar. That's House Resolution 259, the John Talbert House Study Committee. Foley represents, I mean, introduced this bill last year, and it did not go anywhere, so I want to make sure that you watch out for it on our behalf. And it's concerning Study Committee related injuries. We had a, and it's named after the child that died at Waltham Mall Park a couple of years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And so...
Did you say House Bill or House Resolution?
It's called House Resolution 259.
Yes, ma'am.
The other one is House Resolution, House Study Committee for Homeowner Associations, and Commissioner Arrington and myself and a few residents came out to the Capitol at the request of House Representative Foley and testified on the HR transparency issues we were having with some of our declarians in South Fulton. And so I did get notified by Foley that he did, this has been assigned to a committee. And so I would like for you to keep me abreast of how that bill is moving, that's House Resolution 329, House Study Committee on Homeowners, Associations, Condominium Owners, Associations, and Property Owners, and Committee. Also, it would be helpful when you give us this report. Thank you for giving us this report. And maybe it's on this chart that I didn't pay attention to, and I don't see it, if you can indicate whether it's a local or general bill.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Because I know there are different, there are different paths that are taken. And I have seen where it has gotten nasty and they have taken the legislation off the local consent calendar and, and just thawed our bill or, in some cases. Also, for the trafficking, human trafficking bills, are these, I didn't look at this, are these Republican landfills?
Yes.
Thirty-four. Okay, I see the chart.
Chuck F. Strations, yes. Yes, Republican from...
And so I guess, I, I'll call you offline, because I would like to know what the community, what I need to do to engage the community. what I need to do to engage the community to possibly write letters, send emails, or even come down, and when it's assigned to committee. And I know that we, crossover day is approaching us, and so, and, and just for everybody to know, crossover, crossover day is usually a little day, it goes to sometimes one to two o'clock in the morning. But if you, if we need to come down, if it hasn't made it by crossover day, and we need to come down and log the ropes, or we need to get, I saw a press conference, and we weren't notified about it in South Fulton, and had known about it, I would've actually showed, showed up, and, and brought some support.
Okay.
But I need to, I, I really need to know where that bill is, so I can know how to engage residents, and a lot of advocates that are interested in combating sex trafficking. And there's some other council members in other cities that are also interested in human trafficking as well, okay?
I will make sure that you're aware of it, and I will make sure that the officer knows that.
And, and so as I, as the bills progress, is there any way, I know you say you're gonna give us this report bi-weekly, is there any way that you could give us some type of formal notification as certain bills progress, or if it's anything that you need us to do urgently? Because sometimes I got calls like one and two o'clock in the morning saying they needed letters of support, and so could you, is there any way that you could?
Yes.
Do something like that?
Yes, I will work on that as well. Something that we are trying to defeat is moving, and, and we need to enlist you on that, yes, I can, I can call you on that, or vice versa.
Okay.
It's something that we're trying to pass, and someone is working against us, and we need you to come out to the Capitol, I can let you know immediately, instead of just waiting till it's time to give you a report, yes, I can get it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gray. First, first thing, councilor, I thought it was on the, I saw an announcement earlier, it was on the twenty-second, did it move back to the twenty-eighth, or is it already the twenty-eighth?
No, I meant the twenty-eighth day.
Okay.
I'm sorry, right, right, the twenty-eighth day.
It should be on the, is it on March twenty-seventh, it's March?
March seventh.
March seventh.
Oh, March the seventh, correct.
And then Sunny Dye is on April the second.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would like for us to also track SB ten, it is a, so we, we have led the state in decriminalizing no one for less than an ounce. I know that there's bills having ounce, and I'm just wondering if it will preempt what we get done here. And the next one is SB one and HB eighty-eight. It's actually sponsored by one of our residents, Marcus Coleman, it is CJ's Law, it provides for stiffer penalties for drunk drivers.
You said SB one?
SB one and HB eighty-eight.
Yes, sir.
And then, lastly, I am interested in talking with Mr. Smith, so I don't know, you need to set that up.
I'll do it.
Pass on my number, but, but specifically, and I don't know the answer to this, but you said the HOAs and historic districts were exempted?
That's correct.
Are overlay districts or any commercial design districts, are those exempted as well, or would this obdurate overlay districts?
It's my understanding, councilmember, that it is only on residential dwellings.
Okay.
On two, so two-story, one-story, single, or?
Single.
Yeah, or double, like residential, but I don't think it's for commercial, I'll double check that, but I don't think it's for commercial.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir, I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Next, we have Mr. Collins.
So, thank you for your report, very informative.
Thank you.
My concern is House Bill three oh-two and State Bill, is it one seventy-two, the same two bills that we are opposing.
Okay.
But when I did a little research, it appeared that these, I guess the sponsor is from the rural parts of Georgia, and I don't necessarily know if he understands the impact of how that would be for Atlanta Metro, especially here in South Fulton, you know, you know, without high home prices dropping and things of that nature. So this is very important to me, especially when we're dealing with a lot of the developers that are coming into our community, you know, with these substandard materials. So that was my first question, do you know, I, I think he is, is he a Republican?
Yes, Van Smith, yes. Now, in the senate, Senator, Senator John Wooderson is very Republican, Van Smith is also, but yes, these are two Republican bills that they have two trains leaving at the same time, one coming out of the House and one coming out of the senate. I could gladly talk to you offline, and we could kinda craft the narrative, and I could go back to them and have a conversation with them, or if you're going to be down at the Capitol soon, we can have a conversation with them, or just like I'm setting it up for Councilmember Khalid, to have a conversation with Van Smith, we can talk to them, but yet they're both Republican, and it, it may be a challenge trying to stop.
And, and that's what I'm concerned about, because how it impacts us is that, you know, they're thinking about twenty to thirty months, and we're planning for twenty to thirty years building a new city. So it, it's really important, so I would be interested in speaking with him as well.
Okay.
Because we're fighting a lot of issues with these developers, and it's just.
If, again, I know both of these gentlemen well enough to say, there is language from the city of South Fulton that we would like to add on to your bill that says, not necessarily exclude us and make it, you know, rest in safety, but whatever that language is that you wanna change, or whatever the specific line that you don't agree with, they're open, they're, they're open to listening to, how does it affect the city? What, what, what is it that we're missing from the rural to the, you know, to, to, to the metro? And if it's something that they can live with, they'll do it.
So, but the likelihood is that it may pass?
Yes, but again, it may pass, but maybe we can add language to it that makes it more palatable for you all as a council and the city of South Fulton. But the likelihood, knowing these two individuals, Van Smith and John Wooderson, the likelihood is that it will pass, yes, ma'am?
Okay, my next question, you mentioned about G-Da Project, transportation project, so I'm definitely one of those ones who that has. Is there a presumption that we do have a strained relationship with, okay, I just wanna make sure, because if it is, when you say we need to have a better working relationship with G-Da or Dana Lemon, what do you foresee that looking like? I mean, what are, what are your plans for that to improve our?
Thank you for the question. I guess in response to the request, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that as, as well as I can be at my job, I can't go to Dana Lemon, you know, even with my influence, and say, whatever projects you have, put the ones in the city of South Fulton up at the top.
Mm-hmm.
I, I can't do that, but you as a governing body could say, listen, you know, along with me and, and others in her congressional district, to say, listen, you know, the, these projects are important, even, and like you said, not, not a twenty or thirty month, you know, but twenty or thirty years, we're, we're trying to build a city. Even if we don't get all three, five, or ten of, of the statewide transportation projects that we're asking for, this one here is critical, we have to have this one here, it's why, can you ask the state transportation board to approve this, and, you know, go from there? So we can make the ask, we can certainly do it, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the council asking me to go and do it, then I go and do it, and then come back, and then presenting back to the council. This would be more all of us having a relationship with the one person who has the list of projects for this specific area, and she can make the ask to the State Transportation Board for approval. So, yeah, I just meant, yeah, not that it's strained in any way, but just to make sure that, you know, everybody is talking to her and working on her together.
Thank you for the question.
Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Baker?
Thanks so much for all you do, boys, we really appreciate it.
Sure.
And I think you made a good decision to bring you on board, so I appreciate all you doing. Quick question, is it possible to add HR four-seven to your inquiries, the decriminalization of driving, I just would like to know the status of it and where it's going. Also, briefly, I know you mentioned the term, the governor said that he wanted to tackle, you know, gang violence, but I don't know how that works, or how, you know, when you start the narrative or the conversation on behalf of our city, but can you please include the conceptual framework, I would say, of funding and programs and jobs to that conversation?
Yes, ma'am.
Of new programs and jobs. But my goal is, my goal is to make sure that the governor is aware that this is a serious issue for the city of South Fulton, that's, that's my number one goal. But what he hasn't done, for example, he wants to do something with waivers, or Medicaid expansion, or healthcare. He's presented a bill, he has floor leaders, it's about three or four in the, in the House and two in the senate. If the floor leaders have a bill, everyone knows that those bills came from the governor. So he already has something for healthcare that he's done. As far as gang violence and tackling this issue, he hasn't set out legislation yet. So I don't know exactly what it's gonna look like, but knowing that he said it three times in his campaign, in his inaugural, and in the State of the State, I know that it's keen for him, but he hasn't said exactly what that looks like.
Right, but just so you know, normally, when you hear that rhetoric coming from a governor, it doesn't mean, it means putting, putting Band-Aids on bully women, it doesn't mean addressing issues at the root and actually curing the masala.
Yes.
So that's why I'm asking for that.
Yes, sir.
I'll do it.
And consider HR forty-seven, consider that and HR one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baker, Councilmember Jackson.
So I guess you know when I heard him say that, because that's what I addressed with you as far as the game, we want a solution. We want money, we want some of that, so, yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay, Mr. Long, just a couple of things. We talked earlier.
Yes.
About some possible misconceptions, and I wanna make sure, because since I've talked to you, it's gotten worse.
Yes, sir.
As to, so I even said that I agreed to something that I didn't agree to, and I can't agree to anything. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we'd like that you engage in that conversation as we talk, as we talk about the thing. I was with the governor last night, and I did tell him the urgency of what we're doing on full investigation, and where the bill is going somewhere. Of course, like any other governor, he was not totally committed, you know, to it, but at least I had an opportunity to face, face with him, and he knew exactly how to deal with it, okay? On this, Vanessa, with emergency service, transportation, you know, we've been fighting that fight for a long time. I think what has to be addressed, or attention has to be paid to, is that there are four, four reasons that a first responder can transport them, and I think that I can give you a four, but there are four, and I think that, and they do a very good job of if they have to do it, so I thank you to realize that. When I'm saying that, it's not that we are not so far away from that concept of transporting, that we don't know what we're doing, that we can, there are four reasons we can do it right now, get exercise without hanging back. So I just wanted to make sure, and you talk to people, let them know we're not without experience in terms of what we're doing. But I really wish that you had those conversations I had with you today with, with certain people, so we can make sure that we're on the same page, and we're staying out of the same country.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, council.
Mr. Gray?
The starting process for proclamation, let our city.
Yes, I need, I just wanna have a conversation, we may not come up with, I asked the, I asked the attorney to kinda look in and kinda brainstorm some things also, that we can kinda talk about in terms of what we'd like to see. I have talked to cities all in the area, some outside, some not outside. I'm not in the business of, of trying to, a person doing what he wants to, but the one important thing is this, that people who say I know audience out there, they come here for us to take care of business. And we can find some kind of way that we can limit, and one of the ways attorney and I talked about, is that every, every proclamation that has to be given here at this meeting, you know, it could be given at the church, it could be given at whatever, you know, wherever the person is, and that, that, that helps a lot. So I just wanna have this conversation as to, what are some of the ideas and, and, and as council, you can hear those ideas, have you thought of some things that you wanna share with us now, or you wanna hear what they got?
No, I'm just interested in taking notes, we can develop a process, I'll get back with the mayor and he'll present the process.
Okay, Councilwoman Wood.
I mean, I, I really don't have any ideas, I think proclamations are a part of our business, and we should recognize our constituents according to the resolution that was passed unanimously by this entire body, based on the reasons outlined in that resolution. I will say that maybe we can figure out how we can do so many proclamations at meetings, maybe we can talk about on that, but to, you know, but they are a part of our business, they are part of every government, from the federal to the state, to the county, to the local level. And we have to do better about recognizing our people in the city. We have some talented people, we have people who have many accomplishments, and I'm just, you know, taken back that some of the individuals who live in our community have not had any recognition.
Okay, Ms. Collins?
I, I agree with Councilwoman Wood, but I also see your point as well there, as far as, you know, with the number of proclamations that can be as well into, you know, the eight hours of the morning. But my understanding is that we do have a resolution that's already in place, so maybe we just need to tweak the language to add possibly a limit for one council meeting, or I guess, that's the main thing, the number of proclamations that can be done within the year, that's reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I agree with both of my colleagues. I just think that we should probably have that communication when it comes to what's not gonna be on the agenda after something is submitted, communication. I think you did start out stating that if there was gonna be something that wasn't gonna be on the agenda, and myself and my colleagues were anticipating, we would receive an email. We started out that way, and then we kinda slapped up, I think we, we'd be better off if we got back on track with just communication, sharing, hey, this is not gonna be on this agenda because of dot, 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 or we're gonna reschedule this for this one. Or also including some level of priority, if a colleague has just recently issued a proclamation, and another colleague comes up the next week with a proclamation, if there's gonna be a limit, there should be a priority as far as order to allow that person who has it in place it to present, but, how do you?
All right, I'm Mr. Khalid. I like the idea of one proclamation per councilperson. I will say that some months ago, I think back in December, I submitted legislation to have an earlier council meeting time, with a hard stop time, and in that presentation there was, there was also, there was also language about having one proclamation per person. I do just wanna say that legislation is still available for the public to view at Khalid cares dot com slash surveys. The responses that we have gotten have been, the majority of them have been in support of all of the ideas. Also, there is a chart that my previous legislative specialists and I put together that talks about what other councils do in Georgia's ten largest cities. Quite a few of them that meet twice a month only do proclamations either once, or they have an entirely, I can't remember what city or what it might, it might have been. what city or might, they might have been, but they, they have an entirely separate meeting where all they do is proclamations. And so, I mean, I think there's, there are, there are just a lot of interesting things that we can research.
Mayor, mayor, can I clarify? When you said one proclamation, were you saying per meeting or what your recommendation was?
One.
Per month?
One proclamation per council.
Okay, per month, per meeting?
Per month. So we go more than seven proclamations per month. Uh, they would all be at the first meeting because the second meeting we have, um, zoning. So that, you know, that's already an extra hour.
Okay, I'm Mr. Baker.
I wanna piggyback on what, um, Councilman Baker talked about. And I believe that I heard you correctly when, um, you were talking about legislation and there is an advance notice, um, on the legislation is not going to be on the agenda. There needs to be a policy, a process, and procedure, particularly if you have someone coming to a work session and they get notification at the last minute that they're not on the agenda. And we can do better than that. So that's something that we really need to do always.
Well, in fact, it's one of these, because you have to go over stop proclamations. You just wanna see how we can do it more effectively. And so, uh, she's heard you, attorney's heard you, and it does not stop you from calling her if you get other ideas about how we should do it. And now attorney, what do you think that you will have a draft backdoor?
Um, I can, you give me a week, I can have a few, a bit a week.
Okay. And we send it to everybody?
Will do.
And then they can mark it up or whatever. And eventually, over time, we'll come up with something we can agree with. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Baker.
Next item was an add-on item, letter D, Transit X Solar Power Public Transportation Transit Presentation, Mike Stanley, CEO, sponsored by Councilmember Lewis.
I'm not Mike Stanley, I'm from Boston. Uh, he had to fly back. Uh, I'm JT Williams. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, it's good to see you and the council members. Uh, we deeply appreciate this, uh, opportunity to, uh, to present Transit X to you. Uh, this, I know you're rushing time, so this will be a very brief presentation, of course, to answer any questions you may have. But, uh, I, I want you to know, uh, about this particular form of mass transit, uh, and, and to be sure that it's not misunderstood, but properly understood. Uh, we have, uh, the, the, uh, this is in addition to the other various transits that we're aware of. Uh, as you know, A R C in its survey, it's about a month ago, showed the number one on every, on the citizens' priority list is more alternative transits, mass transits. And that's what this is. It's, uh, doesn't replace anything. We cooperate with the martyr, with brother. I'm on the brother board myself, I've been there sixteen years. I'm chairman of projects, transportation projects and plans. And, uh, I have another four years of, of my last five-year performance. And I think I'm gonna say no after that, but that's gonna be enough. But, uh, uh, I, I'm very familiar with, with transportation in metro allow. That's the only reason I mentioned that, the sixteen years I've spent there. Uh, I've learned a lot about it. What I like about Transit X is that it is totally different, just a different alternative. And, and this, but, uh, I have, uh, just gonna hit the highlights. I think you have copies of what's on the, uh, screen there, uh, individually. This is the, showing, uh, the thirteen pages of proposals. I'm gonna go over those with you. You can ask questions if you want to about those. But you should have, uh, some of the highlights. You all have this. It's all good. Uh, that's what I all am gonna go over today. Uh, and I'll be glad to come back and, and meet individually or meet together, uh, mayor as you, uh, be necessary or advisable. Uh, Transit X is totally privately financed. They want, they, they are a Boston company. They want to invest one billion dollars in the city of Southport. It, it, it doesn't, they want to put a billion dollars into your city. Uh, there's no public financing. It is public transportation, but privately financed. That's pretty good. Uh, they, uh, on the other hand, they want to give back five percent, uh, for really riderways that they use. And in addition to that, that four percent of that would go to whoever has it, a lot of that would be your city. Uh, in addition, you get one percent regardless of who has the riderways. They, uh, their solar power, one of my responsibilities is brother, is in charge of air quality. Sixteen years ago, when I took that, we were pretty bad. Now we've done a whole lot of good in the last sixteen years, reducing, uh, carbon and other things, and, and we've now beat federal guidelines. But this is solar powered, just like an electric, uh, situation. Uh, and, and in fact, it produces a lot of excess energy. There are no fumes, no air quality issues. It operates twenty-four seven. It's cheaper than most other transit methods. It reduces congestion, provides parking relief, it improves safety, very safe. We've got one of these that's somewhat similar to this in West Virginia, and operated for forty years, zero accidents, absolutely none. There's no risk to government. They aren't asking you to risk anything. They'll put up performance bonds and other insurance. And, uh, your attorney would be asked to make sure that there is no risk in there in any documents, uh, that you're ever asked to sign. The only document they're gonna ask you to sign initially is just your, uh, uh, approval for them to move forward. It is not binding, no binding agreement. It's just an M O U. And we want your attorney to be sure he checks that out fully, and make sure that it's not binding at this time. Now later on, they'll want you to sign an operating agreement. But that's just to do what they said they're gonna do and make that official. But the M O U is just to give them a go-ahead and then get the financing for it, get the engineering, the surveying, the riderways, all of those things will be done. And then, four or five months later, they come back and ask you to sign an operating agreement. But the operating agreement doesn't risk your, your either. And, uh, your attorneys will, of course, make sure of that. Now, uh, one of the things that, that, uh, that I was kind of surprised when I got on the brother board sixteen years ago was that I knew that in public transit, government had to pay initial capital cost. But I was surprised that government also had to pay two-thirds or more of the operating cost. That was a shock to me. But Transit X would pay a hundred percent of the operating cost, a hundred percent of initial capital, a hundred percent of it. Uh, but they don't rely just on ridership. That's the reason they're able to do it privately. There's ten different sources of revenues. Ridership only one of those ten. But they will pay that five percent to government for, that that five percent is of total revenues, all ten sources of revenue, not just ridership, all revenues. Now, on my highlights, I typed this last night, made a terrible mistake. Number one, it's not gonna be six thousand nine hundred miles. It is only gonna be a hundred and eighty-nine miles a podway. But that's a lot of miles in your city. And, uh, it'll have six, that, that six thousand nine thirty-seven is a number of pods that will be dedicated just to your city. You'll have twelve hundred and thirty stops. That's enough stops so that it'll reach ninety percent of your population within a five-minute walk. That's the maximum. Ninety percent of your people can go one, two, maybe three blocks to get on one of these pods. They're, they're elevated, above ground, uh, that's the reason they're so safe. Uh, the pod only weighs about a hundred pounds, and the passengers can weigh up to eight hundred pounds, but not more than eight hundred pounds. And, uh, it, uh, the average annual payment estimated is fifty million dollars a year for the first twelve years. That starts off at seven million in year one, and goes up to seventy-nine million in year twelve, and keeps increasing. And I'm sure that y'all would, would turn down a good check like that for the, uh, to help your budget. Uh, that's the highlights. Uh, mayor, any questions that you have, uh, this time?
Do you have a?
I was in here.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Baker, go ahead here.
Um, I just saw, what you're up to. And Councilman Khalid showed it to me. So first of all, I didn't know it was in the air. That was number one. And number two, it's autonomous, which means that nobody's driving it. Technology's driving it, correct?
That's correct. It's just like an elevator. When you go on an elevator, nobody's driving the elevator. Now, when I was a kid, I'm eighty-five years old, so, uh, you know, a long time ago, used to be a, a, a elevator operator. But now they don't. You just go in and you push the button, and then all the way back to nothing. Same thing with this. You, you with your, uh, cell phone, you can order one, or you can order the stop. But if you order it ahead of time, it's waiting for you when you get to your stop. And, uh, that's, uh, it, once you, the kiosk does where you wanna go and everything, it goes right down. It is facial identification. So if you've ridden it before, it knows who you are, and knows where you stopped before. And so, when you walk up to the kiosk, they say there's five stops that you usually go to. It's, you, you see the five. And you can push the one that you wanna go to, or if you wanna go to you, and you type in then the stop number. And then it, it comes down, signs go up, people get in from either side, closes up, gets up, and it drives at forty-five miles an hour. No stops, no slowdowns, no nothing. Forty-five miles to where you're going. So it's faster than any other mode of transportation, a lot faster than a car, uh, but any, any mode.
So how, how high is it in the air?
It's about, it's sixteen, like a traffic light, but, uh, just like a truck, you know, but it's like high enough so that you go under, trucks can go under. So about eighteen feet above the ground.
Thank you. I'll read it.
I'm sorry, part above is eighteen feet, yes.
I'm, I'm interested in the money part too, and I'll read it.
Okay.
I have any question on it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes. Thank you for presenting. Um, I communicated with you all quite a bit over the past two weeks. Um, where, where are the proposed sites in Southport? Have you all done a study over the, uh, the geography of Southport and, and?
We, we have, uh, in fact, the one that you have, the one up there is, it doesn't show it as clear, but, uh, the one, uh, that you have, and it should be, this one that shows it, the yellow line.
Yes.
But now, uh, we're very flexible on that. It'll, uh, and it goes, this was done in Boston, not somebody here. Uh, but they're, they, they, they gave it a hundred eighty-nine miles. And on the pilot, which is another, you have, there's twenty-two miles. But you sit down and you'll work out where you want the routes to go.
Okay. And then lastly, uh, did you not bring the demo? Um, if not, I'll send it to my colleagues. I didn't get it till last night. Did you, do you all not have a demo?
Uh, no, we, uh, uh, well, you, you had a full demo. In Boston, outside of Boston, yes, there is.
Okay.
You got, you got, you only know, uh, Mr. Bruce Holmes, he went up for the opening of that, and you got a picture of him in there. Now, he's about as tall as you get in there. He's six foot seven, I think. And, uh, I don't know how much he weighs, but a lot more than I do, a former NFL player. But he, he loves to show the picture of him inside the pod himself.
Okay. And will you, will it be possible for someone in Southport, uh, Councilwoman Lewis, to go to Boston?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll call you.
Okay, sure. That, that'd be fine.
Okay, uh, before we go, Khalid, uh, just, just rock had her hand, and then we'll get to you. Ms. Rock, go ahead.
I think I saw this, um, demo, at least the videos, uh, at the Aero-Traffler, this transportation summit they had at G I C C a while back. Can you talk a little bit about where this is currently operating in other municipalities? I understand this is surrounded by, and of all.
Yeah, it, it is not, it's, it's not fully operational in any city today, but there's a bunch of them that signed up for it. And, and in, uh, there's a, it's a, in Boston, it's a quarter-mile track. You can ride on it for that quarter-mile, see if that works. Uh, but now, it's been fully approved in, in, uh, in Georgia, in Macon, Bev County, in, uh, Cab County, uh, Henry County, four cities, uh, uh, Hayfield, College Park, Lake City, College Park, maybe a couple more.
So when would be the service we see it here in Georgia by another municipality? To kind of see it and?
Okay. When can we see it? Uh, it's planned in, in Henry County and in College Park to be, uh, fully designed, with all surveys, engineered, all finished this year, and construction start next January, finished during twenty-twenty.
Council?
Thank you.
Khalid?
Yeah, my questions are in the same thing. It looks magical. It's not in operation anywhere. Um, where is the first place that will be fully operational, that will Transit X fly us to that place to see it?
Uh, the first place is, is either Henry County on the pilot or, or College Park.
No, not in Georgia, period, in the country. Where is the first place?
The only one is, is in outside of Boston, as I mentioned earlier. That's the only one that, and it is not in a city fully. But this, it's only been off the ground for four years. It's a brand-new company.
So it's, it's, it's fully operational outside of Boston, or is it not?
Yes, in a quarter-mile track.
In a quarter-mile track outside of Boston.
And, and the mayor of, uh, College Park went up for the opening of that, and, uh, Bruce Holmes did, and some others from, uh, the, the, uh, the main areas.
Could, could you, I don't, I don't know, do you work for Transit X, or are you?
Yeah, well, I, I represent, uh, we're, stand up. This, this, I mean, he, he's really in charge of Georgia, and I help him, uh, some.
So my, my, my final question is, could you just arrange for us to come up to, to Boston?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, be glad to do that.
Councilmember Lewis?
Is it, is it possible that we played a video? I think some of my colleagues wanna see that. Yeah, some people are asking.
It's only, it's not long.
It's in our email.
You said the video?
Video's right here.
Uh, yeah, that, that's one of the slides. Uh...
Mr. Baker?
But that, that, that just shows the traffic. It doesn't show the actual...
Uh, yeah, in a minute, it'll show that. Uh, that's just kind of the problems that, and then right after this will show the, uh, still the problems that we all experienced in accidents. These are the various modes of, of transit as well. That, that's the CEO, he had to fly back to Boston really early.
Is this a publicly traded company?
This is, this is what it'll look like, right there. Forty-five miles an hour. Two, two compartments, if you wheelchair to, that's, that's the cargo, uh, various types of uses. See, that's what it looks like. And you'd be sitting in it looking like that. Some need to call it a justice, that's, that's the weight, uh, after my time. That's three in a row there, starting up in the same place. This is just showing us one of many different types, all different, uh, measures. This is just showing us one of many different type alternative, uh, measures of transit. That's what you do in a neighborhood. Now, between cities, it can go a hundred fifty miles an hour. Those are ones that have proven, that have, that have shown that.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, just have one more question.
Yes.
Is this a publicly traded company or a private?
Right, right.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
A lot of thanks, buddy, more person. Mr. Baker?
You can clear me out.
Okay. Thank you so much for that presentation. Very informative.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Look forward to working with you all, with you all at any time. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recess into executive session for persons down in real estate and litigation.
Second. I've removed the second in discussion. All those in favor? We're going to take a session.